Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular monthly meeting for the month of March. It's good to see everyone here this evening. Welcome to our town meetings. We've got some great conditions tonight, and a lot of other business to take care of. This time, if anyone would join me by standing, we'll have an invitation followed by a pleasant lead. Mr. Commissioner?
Ladies and gentlemen, we give thanks for the many blessings in our life, Lord. Just pray that we're mindful of you and all things, Lord, we give thanks for this town that we have, Lord. Lord, pray that you guide all things that are done tonight. We give thanks for the citizens that are here tonight, and the young men that participated and excelled in all things, Lord. That you be the glory in all things, Lord. Guide us in all that we do, and bless each and every family that's represented here tonight. Christ most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A clear allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're now down to item four on business, not on the agenda, editing the agenda. We need, if you all will mark on your agenda, we're going to postpone Senator Chaffin and Delegate Pidion's presentation. They requested, I think Delegate Pidion's documents for presentation have not arrived, and of course Senator Chaffin wanted to be here, they'd like to do it together. So, talking with them, we're going to postpone that item to the April meeting. And I already talked to Diane, if we can remember to add that to the April agenda, Diane. Also, we need to add, under new business, splash pad fence bids. Does anyone else have anything that they need to amend the agenda?
Mayor, I've also got a feasibility study proposal from Lane Group.
Is that under...
You want to put that under, you want me to do that under my committee reports? Or do you want to put that under other business?
Well, just put it under, yes, put it under other business, what you got?
Feasibility study for the Russell Theater.
Okay. Here now is our motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We also have received minutes for the February regular meeting and the special call meetings in February, the first of March.
I have two questions on those.
Go ahead.
February the 11th, Mr. Peddwell, you could tell me you made a vote at the public hearing on Mr. Miller, did you vote yes or no? Okay, and they had yes in the minutes.
February the 11th?
Right.
Under section 17.
And on the March divorce, the special meeting, under number eight, regarding the installed water line, it said at no cost to the IDA, should that be no cost to the town? It's under number eight.
It should be the IDA, we're providing that service to the IDA.
I know that no cost to, I mean, they're...
There's no cost to the IDA.
Okay.
What we're doing, as far as the installation...
The installation, we're doing that.
But the materials, they're valid.
Right, they're valid, the material, but it says no cost. The installation is the no cost to them.
That's correct, the installation's no cost to them.
I'm making sure that's right.
Yes. Any other questions about the minutes? We need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Senator Mark, you sent us accounts payable. Do you have any delete additions?
There's one addition on the capital assets, the, such a small one, a hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents to WL on payment that we had.
You said small.
Yeah.
That's out of our B-DOT maintenance.
That's out of our B-DOT.
You don't make the...
Where was this paid, was that Canada or...
No, this is the payment of all Main Street, out of your drive, and the Donal City Moore Church, all of that, and the Hill.
Have a motion to approve the, approve the accounts?
Yes, sir.
As well, the accounts payable and the capital asset addition.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, has advertised in the Lebanon News at this time, they're going to declare us a joint meeting for the meeting with our Lebanon Planning Commission to consider a recommendation. Mr. Chairman, do you have a form?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, this time, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, sir. If Diane would read the application, please.
An application has been submitted by Nancy Osborn for conditional use permit for a taxidermy business. The property is located at 38 Chevrolet Avenue in R2 General Dwelling District. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
Thank you. Is Miss Music here? All right, if you would, kind of maybe explain to us what that you're going to do, and how you're going to operate, and your hours of operation, anything that you may have that's vital to the application.
Well, I would really have to ask Joshua Ward to do that, he's the one that's putting in the business, he's right here, that he could tell you about the operation of the business and hours.
The hours will be mainly the evening, from five to ten, or just, only mountain deer heads and fish, and just game animals. No, I mean, we're not going to be processing meat or nothing like that. You'll be up in the week, every Monday through, yeah, we'll be there Friday, some on the weekends, but not a whole lot.
Any members of the planning commission have any questions for this gentleman? Is that, is the conditional use permit, is it in your name, Miss Music?
Should be in her name. Is it in ours or...
See, she's the property owner, I think we put her name as the one requesting.
All right, that'd be fine, I just didn't, didn't... All right, thank you. Is anyone here to speak in opposition of the application? Board members have anything to say, or questions?
Mr. Chairman, the property that we're looking at really doesn't have much retail value and does have commercial value, so I would ask that we allow the conditional use permit because...
Is this a property we discussed once before?
Yes, sir.
A month or so ago, I thought so.
Yes, sir, that's it.
All right, thank you.
If you look at, I think all the members got that same copy, it's made for commercial use.
All right, this time, we entertain a motion to approve the applications presented.
Is there a second?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify, same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Mayor, members of council, I think that concludes our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, I oppose the public hearing, and ask our planning commission, do you have a recommendation for council approval regarding this application?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we, the members of the planning commission, request the approval of the application, along with the applies to all the parking regulations as we do on all others, so we consider it to be approved.
We've heard a recommendation from our planning commission. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve this conditional use permit.
On the table.
Is there a second? Any further, further questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Mr. Chairman, members of our planning commission, thank you for your service, since I could spend monthly here, which I think's a good thing, you know, it's a lot of business going on.
The pay's the same.
Yeah.
The pay's the same.
I don't know if those call you at all, but I would...
Really?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tomorrow? Okay. staff, and the wrestling team, third place in the state.
Yes, sir.
That's well done, well done. And I've been with you, I know how well done that is, that's quite a feat. And we're also very proud of our wrestlers who have succeeded throughout the school year, but then particularly at the state tournament. And at this time, I'm going to come around the front, and we have some presentations to make to our wrestlers, and we'll go from there. All right, y'all love us, Coach. This young man's been here, I believe, three times, and he's going to make it four. Four-time state wrestling champion. Coach Wade, can you stay up here with me during this?
Sure, sir.
Please, would you come?
Yes, sir.
All right, here we go. I appreciate it. So you want to put them up off of there?
Yeah, let's get back.
Okay.
Okay.
Being a Rooney back here?
Fantastic.
Has some... All right, Heather.
All right, everybody stay where you are. That looks good. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your advice. God bless with this thing. We stay where you are, that's right.
Sit down, say your...
You're good.
Yes, sir.
Where's Logan? That summer? There he is, I thought so. That's another wrestling champion, plenty of them, man. Clarified the bid documents for the Masonry. Y'all need to hear his figures again?
Do I have any names?
No.
This is the verbiage in the, in the, in the bid.
Here's the verbiage in the instruction to bid. It says, prospective bidders should understand this work will be done within existing medians along major streets within the town of Lebanon, and will require coordination with the town for traffic safety measures.
That's Mr. Commissioner. That's who that coordinate that with. Knowing that, do I have a motion on this bid? But they, he still stays at forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars on Ken's. Bids haven't changed. I make a motion.
Well, Ken was, he wasn't in the office to give me the difference in the traffic safety versus just the Masonry portion. So, he said he could get that in the morning, but he was out of town this afternoon.
So, what?
You don't make a motion on one of them?
I make a motion to our Steffi Construction at twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for the concrete bid. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Mark, are you going to keep all these together here?
I'm not sure.
What did he say with him? Diane, did you owe that, Diane?
You owe me, uh...
Oh, well, you don't say owes.
You owe me the planners and data providers, you owe me those, sir.
When's, what date is the bid due for the splash pad?
That's covered next.
It's in recovery, too.
Yeah. We're fine. That's what the bid will work on.
Okay.
Mason, or the metal work?
Now, then, to the bid for the fence that's splash pad.
I thought we were going to do that.
Iron Works.
Appalachian Iron Works.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
It's like opening Christmas presents.
No, 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 maybe Murky by Saint Murray.
Okay, so, what I had asked Mark to do was, since the sign metal is such a specific craftsman piece, instead of bidding that out and getting multiple qualities, I'd asked to, I worked directly with Appalachian Iron Works on this, and get a bid from them on what we wanted and how to build it. And so, they submitted a bid for the two large signs that will go on Pittston Road and on West Main Street. The metal work for all of that, for each sign, is four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars installed.
For both of them?
That's for each, that's each.
Each.
Yes, sir.
Again, is that covered under V-DOT Urban Program?
It is, yes, it is. And then, also, the secondary signs, if you remember, we changed out the existing wooden post, the black metal, to match all of that. So, for the secondary signage in town, those double posts again, installed, would be nine hundred and fifty dollars each.
What would be them on?
Though, I believe I had five listed on the bid document. Let me make sure. Five secondary signs and two primary signs.
It would be fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for all of them. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
How much? Fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, best my calculation. Nathan, do we know, based on your design, you know, the individual civic community si...
Yes, sir.
Around seals?
Yes.
Did you change the size of those?
I did not.
So, the existing ones will fit there?
They should, yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and if, you know, again, I know we've had those touched up, the large signs. If those civic signs, something happened to them, my recommendation would be to go back with an aluminum, just a screen printed aluminum sign, but that can be a discussion for another day.
May I, do you have an objection, or any member of the council have an objection to sharing it on social media, what the renderings are going to look like? We've had a lot of people asking, you know, what's going, you know, what's going to go up on there?
I don't mind the bid, as long as I, if I could maybe send them to you, we'll put our little logo on the bottom of our thing, but other than that, no, it's great.
And just send it to me as a J. Craig?
Sure.
And then we can do that.
You got it?
And I also think Heather's doing an article on this in the Lebanon News.
Okay. And that, have the album that's signed, ready?
Okay, okay.
And then that'll be good, because then you'll send that to Josh, and it'll go on to our website, to where people can see that.
Mayor, do you need a motion for Mark to work with Appalachian Iron Works, or finish the iron work for the metal work with our entryway signage?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay.
Mayor, I've got one more request for Nathan. Me and Deanna had went through Na, went through town with Nathan, back when we looked at this B-DOT enhancement project, and we identified other areas that are not necessarily covered under the, under the urban maintenance, like we identified the Love Sign, maybe the middle school planner in the downtown, or planner out here. I would also like Nathan to work with the bid owners to get us quotes on the landscape of those areas and the construction of those areas, possibly to redo our planners to match that stonework that we plan on using, or that we're currently using throughout town, just to obtain quotes at this point for those additional areas, such as the Love Sign, and that me and Deanna and Nathan have identified for the council.
So, you're saying, in other words, get bids from the same people?
Well, not just quotes, just get, just get quotes.
I mean, quotes?
Yeah, just get quotes.
From the successful bidder?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're good.
Is that fair, Deanna?
Right.
I'm fine to do that. What I would recommend at this point is that we, we call the successful bidders and have a pre-construction conference with each of them, to make sure everybody's on the same page, and look at the same plans, and all that good fun stuff.
Well, is this the stone only?
Well, it'd be, it'd be...
Planners?
It'll be the, it'll be some mason work, and it'll be some landscaping work, but I understand you probably want to have this pre-construction meeting with...
I think you want to have the bidders first, and establish that, and... And establish the schedule, and then ask them, say, look, there's some other places in town that we'd like to look at, here's how that's quantified. You know, you guys go ahead and get started on the big push of the project, but what would you charge us to do these other areas?
So, this will be Davis and Steffi?
Yes, sir.
Who do you meet with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we need a motion to do that, Kevin, or can we just ask them?
I think you just ask the quotes.
All right. All right. Can I, can we now go to the splash pad bids?
Yeah, we're good.
Just standing for now.
Just one forty-two thousand.
Okay, we have received one bid for the splash pad fence. And that is Steffi Construction, nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Nine thousand eight hundred and five.
Nine thousand eight hundred and fifty, for the splash pad fence. What's your, well, we have one bid.
I'll make a motion, we accept Steffi's bid on the splash pad here for ninety-eight fifty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Why don't you get on that?
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, thank you for your service, since I could spend monthly here, which I think's a good thing, you know, it's a lot of business going on.
The pay's the same.
Yeah.
The pay's the same.
I don't know if those call you at all, but I would...
Really?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tomorrow?
I'll give you a...
Okay. Coach Wade? I'm happy myself, in the town council, we want to congratulate you, your staff, and the wrestling team, third place in the state. That's well done. Well done. And I've been with you, I know how well done that is, that's quite a feat. And we're also very proud of our wrestlers who have succeeded throughout the school year, but then particularly at the state tournament. And at this time, I'm going to come around the front, and we have some presentations to make to our wrestlers, and we'll go from there. All right, y'all love us, Coach. I'll just go into the... This young man's been here, I believe, three times, and he's going to make it four. Four. Four-time state wrestling champion. Coach Wade, can you stay up here with me during this?
Sure, sir.
Would you come?
Yes, sir.
All right, here we go. I appreciate it. So, you want to put them up off of there?
Yeah.
Okay. This young man's been here, I believe, three times, and he's going to make it four. 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 Four.[1628.81]
But after talking with Jim Baldwin, I had come on plateau, he made it pretty clear to me that he was going to require a feasibility study to be completed on the theater before any monies and I forget the name of the, the project funds. It's essentially the Sunset Digital Economic Development Funds that are going to be available to apply for through, through Kamala Plateau. This study would be required. Also, this study would enlighten the town into how much that we're looking at to rehab the theater. There's, there could be some possible environmental issues with the theater that could make the cost astronomical. So even with our possible funding agencies such as Kamala Plateau and VC to tobacco, ARC, DHCD, all the different funding agencies, you know, they're, they're likely to require this to be done, but also will tell us, is this, is, what kind of investment that we're going to have to get this theater open and acquire rehab and what it would take, possibly even some, some information on operation. So they've, I've asked Matthew Lane of Lane Group to provide us a feasibility study proposal or estimate. And he did break, he did break, one thing I did ask for itemized is to include and not include the, the Hanson the, the Hanson adjacent property. I've talked with Tony about, you know, do we want, if, if we do pursue the feasibility study, do we want to include the cost of, of, I mean, acquiring the adjacent lot at the negotiated option price plus, you know, that will be some additional construction costs there. Likely parking will be on that lot, at the bottom of the lot also, that's some additional cost. Or do we want to pursue rehab of the theater only and a feasibility, and/or a feasibility study to start with on just the theater? So that's something I wanted to bring up for conversation for the council tonight. It looks like it takes ninety days to complete the feasibility study. And I think if we're going to do it, if we're interested, I know there's a lot of conversation about the interest in acquiring the theater and renovating that, you know, to have our own venue for, for multiple purposes. But I feel like this is going to be necessary for us and for the funding agencies to provide funds for the rehab.
If we do the theater plus the adjacent lot, does that change, how much does that change the price?
Fifty-nine hundred dollars. And it's my understanding that if we approved, if we approved the, if we approved the feasibility study with just the theater, then it could be, a lot of that's going to be, you know, existing condition of theater and observation and site, site assessment and that sort of thing. But we could, at a later date, we could, my understanding is, if we do acquire the adjacent lot or if that's in the plan, that we could receive those additional fifty-nine hundred dollars worth of services to see what they come up with on the adjacent lot.
Okay, now, and Lane Group is our, is the company, is the architectural group that's already worked with us on the downtown project?
That is correct.
Same, the same group?
That is correct.
Is this, you want to put that in form of a motion with Scott?
Well, I mean, I'd, I'd kind of like to open it up for discussion first to see how, you know, if the council still, still wants to pursue acquisition of the theater and is this something that you guys are willing to put money into before we even purchase? So I mean, one of the things Mr. Stanley asked is, so if we do this, that doesn't mean we're going to buy, buy the theater or not buy the theater. There's a chance that we may do this theater and it may come back that we, it's, you know, maybe there's environmental challenges we're not aware of that would make the cost astronomical and we don't pursue the acquisition of the theater. But then again, it's still going to be required from, from at least one of our major funding sources, possibilities to get it done.
I think the acquisition part is only items on, if I'm not mistaken, in the closed session. Two out of three there. Can we discuss it at that time?
Yeah.
Is that good?
That was good.
All right. The resolution we sent to the school board regarding the support of the athlete, the multi-
Use facility.
Multi-use facility of Lebanon High, we need to approve that. Need a motion to approve that for records.
I have to mention that we approved the renovation, I have to count, a resolution to support the multi-use sports facility of Lebanon High.
Effective March seventh.
Effective March seventh.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close. All right. Let's see. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go on to closed session. We need to, need a motion to go on to closed session under the appropriate section of the code for personnel. Out of one personnel, three acquisition of property and seven legal.
Two point two, that's three, seven, one, one, eight, for one, two, and seven.
Three.
One, three, and seven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not two, one, or a.
Stand in closed session.